Move and second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Motion move.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Okay. At this time, um, we are coming out of executive session. We have had a lengthy, um, discussion. And we have discussed engineering services. We talked about election matters, professional services, airport counseling contract, exit three conflict waiver of project. That's my grandson. Discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion of the provision of services encouraging location of expansion industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. And that was prospect update on Chelsea South CPS development, Point South Development Agreement, Center Point, and the contract. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to come out of executive session.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we come out of executive session. At this time, do we have any motions coming out of executive session?
We do, Madam Chair. Uh, the first of two. And I move to authorize the administrator to execute the conflict waiver provided by a ver reform and law firm regarding their representing of a prospective purchaser at Cypress Ridge Park.
Do I hear second?
Second, Madam Chair.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Uh, second is a motion to approve the execution of a contract, professional services with SEPI Engineering to provide consulting services at Public Works as discussed in the executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, very much. At this time, we're going to have the pledge of allegiance by Mr. John Kemp, followed by the application by Councilman Grant.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we? Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come at this hour of the evening to say thank you. We thank you, oh God, for allowing us to come together in another county council session. We come, oh God, thanking you for your son, Jesus, who died that we may have life and have it more abundantly. Oh God, we pray that you would give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we go forth in this meeting this evening. And oh God, make us better men and women tomorrow than we are today.
Yes.
This is our prayer we pray, and all God's people say.
Amen.
That's my grandson trying to get a ride home for practice. But I'm a lot of pressure. All right.
You'll get Uber.
You'll get Uber. Prove of agenda?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Oh, um, it's been properly moved and second, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, clerk's compliance, please.
Clerk's compliance. So we have it on the record.
Yes, ma'am. Compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all these media persons requesting notification.
Okay, thank you. Approve of the minutes from March 21st, 2022?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor of?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going on to open the floor to the public. Now, we want to hear what you got to say. But if we allow everybody in here 30 minutes, we won't get out tonight until 12 o'clock. And I have a curfew. So we're asking you to take three minutes, no more than five. And if all of you are saying the same thing that I have in here, we already heard you. You've already had a spokesman that have done the work for you. But we want you to express some of your concern. So if the developers are here, they were heard from the people and not only us. So they'll know what we are doing when we have to do what we got to do.
Madam Chair, we might want to mention too that this is also a public hearing in addition to public comments, public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing right along with this, public hearing. So that you can voice your concerns. Okay, everyone in agreement? Everyone in agreement? Okay, I'm talking kind of small now. They know I'm quick with this gabber like it and say, let's move on. All right, the first person on the, um, public hearing comment is Mr. David Huganen.
Huganen.
Huganen. And he wants to speak on the Chelsea.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. I'm David, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, just as a matter of logistical, we have four public hearings on specific projects. And then we have general public comment section. Is it Chair's preference that we hear general public comments on things not on those four public hearings now? And have the public hearings on each of the specific projects at the appointed agenda time so that we can keep track better of who's speaking on what project?
Good. Yeah, come back to you, sir.
Madam Chair, it might be helpful just those who are here to speak in regards to the Chelsea development project. We're going to have a public hearing on that agenda item. And that may be more appropriate for you to speak at that time versus now. That's a specific public hearing, you can direct those words for that.
You have some lefts.
Yes, ma'am. We get term this way.
Okay, so would you, um, you say now just go to the, um,
General public comments on matters not on the agenda. And the matters on the agenda for public hearing, if you wish for me, would be on, um, the, uh, Center Point Development Agreement, on the, um, Center Point, not Chelsea South. Then we have the Chelsea South PDD, public hearing, the Chelsea South, or Chelsea Plantation Development Agreement. Then we have a planned development district for CSP development, which is on Highway 278. A public hearing for the development agreement for, uh, CSP, also known as Conduit Street Partners on 278. And then, uh, two general rezoning requests for a property located on Speedway Boulevard and a public hearing on, uh, a two properties located on Church Road. Those are specific items that you can identify yourself as you went on those items when they're called the public hearing. This would just be general public hearing if you choose, you know, other items than those.
The ones that.
We've done a good job of confusing.
Yep.
I can assist with you if you'd like. With the consideration of the speaker, uh, Mr. Huganen said he wants to speak on Chelsea. That would be more appropriate at the public hearing along with Kate Schaefer, Grant McClure, both wanting to speak on Chelsea. Jenny
Bales.
Bales, perhaps, um, on Highway 46 or Sanders, which I'm not sure that's Chelsea. A O Gaston wants to speak about Cusahatchie, which is not on the agenda as far as I can tell. Michelle Gaston wishes to speak on Score. And Calvin Bryan on Chelsea. Richland, which I'm not sure if that's Chelsea in particular, but Milton Woods is Chelsea. So it would be those.
Mr. Gaston.
Why don't you just do one at a time?
And we have some other signups specifically, the projects as they come through.
Uh, Mr. Gats, Michelle Gaston, if you'd like to have a public comment, you can come to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Council members, interested parties. My name is Michelle Gaston. I'm a resident of Jasper County. I'm also the Minority Outreach Coordinator for the School of South Carolina Low Country Chapter. And for those of you who don't know about Score, that is a national organization that provides business services to small businesses and nonprofits throughout the country. Our chapter service, our chapter service area is Buford, Colliton, Hampton, and Jasper County. We are trying to make inroads into Jasper County in order to be able to offer a grant program that we ran for the first time last year. We actually had a competitive program that offered $2,500 in grants to small businesses. And they could use the funds for their operations. We actually had 80 applicants last year. We had 11 winners. We, we only had five of 80 from Jasper County. And of course, we didn't have any winners because the word just did not get out the way we wanted it to. So I'm here tonight to try to bring about awareness, to try to make an appointment with this body to come back at a later time to present, to present you with more information about the program. Because we're ramping up now to do our Minority Small Business Support Program 2.0. We plan to run the program during the summer and have awards targeted for December of 2022. We saw a lot of problems with the quality of the applications that we received last year from our small businesses across the four counties. So what we want to do is to hold seminars throughout the summer to help our small businesses learn how to write business plans, learn how to prepare their financials, learn how to do the assignment of cost to task, learn the relationship between what they're asking for in their application and their business plan. Even if they don't receive our grant money, we believe that our intervention will allow them to be able to approach a bank or another financial institution in order to be able to gain capital, in order to be able to advance their business. So I'd like to have another opportunity when there's more time to come back and make a formal presentation before this body. Because what we'd like to do is to come to Jasper County and hold seminars on how to write business plans and how to actually learn more about this program. As a Minority Outreach Coordinator, I touched all 80 applications and some of them several times last year. We don't have that kind of bandwidth or that kind of time this year because we really would like to expand across our four counties. So we want to give everyone as much of an upfront advantage as possible before the program actually launches this year to make sure that they have a fighting chance and an opportunity to compete and be successful.
Thank you very much. And, um, call the clerk's, our clerk's office?
Yes.
And she will set you up. Now I'm telling you, it's not going to be the next one or the next one because we're in budget.
I understand.
And we'll be struggling, boxing it out, but.
I'm retired federal budget officer. I get it.
We might have to call you.
I get it. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Believe everyone else that we have signed up or wanting to speak on the Chelsea Development Project. Anybody else wanting to speak and public comment? Not related to Chelsea? Mr. Gaston?
Gaston, yes. My name is Tony Gaston. I live in West Cusahatchie. Madam Chair, council members. I have a question with regard to the process and the standards for the roads and the parks and grounds around the community centers. From time to time, we have high winds and limbs and debris falling to the roads and on the properties of the community centers. What's the process and what's the standard for maintaining those areas? Thank you.
Thank you. You can hear, um, from us, Mr. Gaston. You got a call in?
Okay, I believe this is everybody who's signed up.
Come get a card from the county administrator.
Everyone else who's signed up to speak, when we call up the Chelsea Development.
Okay. Resolutions, we have none. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. And the ordinance list, the first one is third reading of a bond ordinance, 0202208, providing for the issuance and sale of Jasper, of Jasper County, South Carolina Hospital, your accommodations fee, revenue bond, airport capital improvements project series 2022 in a principal amount of not exceeding $5 million to prescribe the purpose, the purposes for which the proceeds may be extended, to provide for the payment thereof, and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman and members of council. I handed out to you a revised, uh, bond ordinance. We just received that on Saturday. There had been some additional discussion last week as to whether or not we wanted this bond to be tax, a tax exempt bond and, or no longer, what the term is, no longer qualified tax exempt obligation. And based on potential funding, um, requirements later on in the year, it was determined that the difference between the exempt or the non-exempt and the tax exempt was minimal. And so the, the, uh, interest rate went from 2.9% to 3% to 2.98% over the term. And the, um, payment dates were more clearly defined, that's twice a year, rather than there had been some, um, little, uh, more, I guess, um, loose language regarding that. And, uh, so what you have before you is the final, as of Saturday, final revised bond ordinance for the $5 million. The difference between the two bank qualified versus not, um, bank qualified is about $10,308 over the term of nine, 12 years, excuse me, 12 years.
Okay, um, have you reviewed? Yes.
I've reviewed it over the weekend and consulted with, uh, Mr. Howe, Sam Howe, Manana Linkus, and our bond consultant, Mr. Canty of, I can't remember the name of the.
Austin Municipal.
Austin Municipal. I had looked at it, so it appears to be in order. And it would be appropriate if the council wants to pass this or if you pass the substitute version handed up to Ninus rather than the one that's in the back.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to call for a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
That's a motion to substitute.
Okay. Motion has been made to substitute and has been seconded by Mr. Bryant, name of. Mr. Stewart, John. Not Bryant.
Yeah, I'm second.
Okay, all in favor of?
Aye.
Say aye. Okay, motion's carried.
The next item on the agenda is for public hearing only. And it's for ordinance 02022-10 to amend the Center Point Development Agreement pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Development Act by making provisions to include additional tracts of land, extending the term on matters related thereof thereto. Article four, title 20 of the Code of Ordinances of Jasper County authorizing the chairperson of Jasper County Council to execute said development agreement as amended. And this is an item for public hearing only.
Okay. At this time, do council have any questions?
No, ma'am.
At this time, I'm going to open the floor for a public hearing. If you need to come up, state your name. One wants.
Good afternoon, my name is Charles Reed.
My lord, how are you, Charles?
I'm just fine.
It's been years.
Yes. Yes, it has been. Anyway, I look concerned here when I cut the letter from the, uh, planning department. And I'm looking at the, the map that was accompanied with that letter. The properties that I've been paying taxes on for years doesn't appear on here. And I'm trying to figure out why is that?
Mayor, is Mayor Center Point?
I'm sorry?
Is Mayor this?
It's right off Church Road, right across the street from Fisher Town.
This is not, this is Church, this is Center Point here. This is on Highway, um, what's that, 278, um, listen.
Center Point is Highway 170.
170.
Yeah, sure.
Project item eight.
You just got to notice because these people here have applied and you're within 500 feet.
Changing.
And that's what concerned me. I'm trying to.
You got to wait till that come up.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Wait till that come up, Charles. Listen again, I'm giving the. All right. Go to public hearing. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing for Center Point.
The next item on the agenda is also for public hearing only. An ordinance to adopt planned development districts only for attracting land consisting of approximately 291.7 acres bearing Jasper County Tax Map number 0810002008, located along Snake Road northwest of the intersection of Snake Road and Highway 170 and known as Chelsea South PDD. And this is for public hearing only.
Good evening, chairman and council members. Um, before you open the floor up, uh, to the public, I just wanted to let you know I have received 21, um, public hearing comments. And it, I know, I don't know if they're here or not, but I know several have asked me to be their voice tonight and share these comments. So I might be able to read them to you.
Now you're not going to read 21 comments.
Some are short.
Yeah, short.
Some are very short.
You can email them to us and let the ones here, if you want to speak, speak.
Yeah.
That'll probably be the quickest way to do it.
Okay, whatever, it's your pleasure.
Yeah, we all got the same message, yeah. Okay. Where's Mr.? At this time, you will have the public hearing. Public hearing is over. Yeah.
Okay. Madam Chair, Councilman, I'm David Huganen. They pronounce it Hugany down here. Uh, I'm the other person from Cusahatchie, if y'all were wondering. Mr. Gaston said, well, I'm the other person that lives there. But I work in Augusta and I come home every weekend. Jasper County's home, uh, is where I was raised. Travel on Snake Road at least every other weekend. It's got to be the most dangerous road in tri-county area. Uh, it absolutely does not need any additional traffic. The other thing I would like to mention, and it won't take but a second, is that, uh, my mother moved, uh, right out of Augusta, it's called Columbia County, Evans and Mark Ditz, 60 years ago when I was 12. And it was farm land, it was dairies, it was timberland. Now it's nothing but rooftops. Almost as bare as water. That's not what Jasper County needs. Jasper County is too special for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kate Schaefer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Kate Schaefer with the Open Land Trust. And I'm happy to have the opportunity to speak to y'all tonight regarding the Chelsea PDD. Um, the Open Land Trust works with landowners and community members in seven counties across the low country. Um, and I'm happy to be back tonight in Jasper, um, having worked with y'all in a previous capacity on some of our solar farm, um, zoning ordinances, as well as the comprehensive plan in 2018, um, which is a really impressive document. So thanks for having me back. Um, the property tonight is for a planned development and development agreement is in the heart of what we all call the Fort Royal Sound. And I'm sure that sounds familiar, but in, um, the land trust community, we pulled, pulled together partners in 2019 with experts from NOAA and USCB to identify the Fort Royal Sound and the most strategic properties for land protection in that watershed. Um, this property, as well as others in the Broad River Corridor from 170 to Ridgeland, all up and down Snake Road, just really stood out as critical to protect the water quality, which we all depend on for our shared quality of life, for fishing, for swimming, um, for our sense of place and enjoyment and how we define what makes Jasper County special. There's a scientific model that backed this up with endless data. Um, but really the pull and the feel of a place, I think, is important and known to us all. This piece of property is also a small piece in a larger property and several properties that will collectively determine the water quality in the Broad River, Yaw Creek, and Hazard Creek for generations. If developed poorly, regional water quality will suffer. And so therefore, we believe rezoning should not be taken lightly or done in a piecemeal fashion. Um, and wanted to speak to this one tonight because I think there's some opportunities before you. One is to complete a thoughtful analysis of how this development pays for itself. If water quality is to be negatively impacted, what are you getting in return? How does this fulfill the goals of the comprehensive plan? Um, this idea relates to several goals in your plan, including an analysis of how new development does pay for itself or not, as well as what the future land use calls for this corridor as rural conservation and resource conservation. Arguably, the housing, the multifamily, the, um, storage and commercial don't expressly fit in those categories. The second opportunity before you is to think about forming a landowner task force. The Open Land Trust has participated in two successful landowner task forces. One in the Ace Basin where 315,000 acres are now protected. And one in the Savannah River area where 250,000 acres are protected. In the Savannah especially, this protects our drinking water quality. But collectively, these efforts support landowners, sustain agriculture and forestry, and attract land conservation dollars in the millions. They've helped create places and further the places that we love. We have a generational opportunity to do this in this corridor because the properties are still held by the long-term landowners that have so much history and love for the, for the, um, land before they pass this on to younger generations or national builders or the like. So I'll wrap up just by reminding all what you know to be true. And that is in the low country of South Carolina, the land and the water are interconnected. And the water quality depends on the surrounding, um, land use patterns. Both are essential to our quality of life. And we ask that you study the fiscal impact and the comprehensive plan recommendations of this specific request and form a landowner task force to provide recommendations on the entire Broad River Corridor. By pausing this rezoning tonight, you are not saying no to development, but you're rather saying yes to opportunities that lie ahead with major investments in land conservation, healthy water quality, and thoughtful development for generations. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have.
Hey, good evening, council. My name's Grant McClure and I'm working for the Coastal Conservation League. I'm here to talk about the Chelsea South project. I'm going to tend this this evening to request the denial of the proposed zoning change on the Chelsea, Chelsea South Track to a PDD. The rezoning of the Chelsea South Track is a direct conflict with Jasper County's current zoning ordinance. current zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Um, that plan seeks to protect the landscape, rural character, and natural resources in Jasper County. Um, the tract is, is currently zoned as rural preservation land, um, and the future use laid out by the comprehensive plan is best suited for rural conservation. Um, denying the rezoning helps to protect the one-hundred-and-thirty-one acres of wetlands that are on the property, um, and wetlands are important because they provide ecosystem services. Um, that includes things like flood and stormwater control, um, recharging the groundwater table, trapping sediment, and sequestering carbon emissions, as well as providing habitat for wildlife. Um, in addition, sprawl is expensive sprawl-style developments. Um, a study found that for ever, every, a dollar and sixteen cents, um, excuse me, so, um, sprawl requires a dollar and sixteen cents in community services for ever one dollar of tax revenue that it contributes. Um, additional expenses include, um, increased traffic on roads, and, um, sending community services far away from the urban center. Um, some additional concerns that the Conservation League has identified are rapid growth in the surrounding area, including the proposed car track. Um, the site's rezoning could also create what, what we believe is a possible domino effect, uh, where you're seeing the southern portion of Chelsea South developed, um, the development could potentially move up that corridor along the Broad River all the way to I-Nine-Five. Um, again, uh, wanted to stress the site's proximity to the Broad River drainage, and the implications of adding more impervious surface, uh, which is going to create more runoff, and potentially result in water quality problems downstream. Um, we've already seen a number of shellfish closures in the area, um, and, you know, it's something to consider, uh, since many folks that live in Jasper County make their living, um, you know, on the water. Um, CCL believes that denying the Chelsea South rezoning, uh, is in the best interest for Jasper County, and for adjacent counties, and the larger region. I implore you tonight, council, um, to consider nipping the proposed development in the bud, and, um, and work towards a conservation-based solution. So, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, is it Ms. Bales?
Oh.
Bailey?
Uh, that is Baker, but I have, uh, for Miss H.
Okay.
Let me get to that for me.
That'll be fine, yes ma'am, thank you for that. Um, Calvin Bryan.
My name's Calvin Bryan, I'm a chair, council members, lifelong resident of Jasper County, moved to Beaufort County in two thousand and seven. Calvin, good to see you.
Divorced us.
This is Bradley.
Divorced us. So, you divorced us, you divorced us.
Well, life in the river. Uh, I'm just a little old regular boy here, twenty years with the state, three years with US government, bad coast stabilization and drainage, uh, traffic. It's, it's necessary everywhere you go, but it's not necessary in this problem that we're unfortunately here. Chelsea was started back in nineteen thirty-seven by the Marshall Fields family. They developed it for recreational use. When you have people that are lifelong residents here, they make sacrifices to leave this country as they founded. New people come in, they have no vested interest in this land, none whatsoever. I was with the Upper New River Drainage Basin, which we started a canal from up above Tillman, down to Great Swamp, to ex, uh, take excess water off of the savannas in Okati Club, and different areas like that. When farmers have problems with drainage, the US government, we do work with that, we got rid of the water from them. The history of this land is slowly, slowly fading. We live in a place now that's called Okati, O-K-A-T-I-E, Okati. Everybody, I mean, I've been down in this part of the country all my life, Laurel, the river, everything else, it is my love, it is my life. When you come here, you become part of it. Chelsea, which is what we are saying now, Chelsea, that's where we live, we live in Chelsea. The older people in the region called it Chee-Chelsea. That is gone now. Most of the gullible people are now gone from this area. I mean, I could name you tens of thousands of people that have come through this area and have loved it and fell in love with it. I worked for Seepines, I worked for Hilton Head Plantation, I wasn't care of the dogs or the property on Pinky Island. Two generals owned that property, in order to keep development out of it, they didn't wanna leave it, as an open trust to their children, anybody else, they got with the state of South Carolina, says, "Take my half and give it to the state, you take my half and give it to the state." No further development on Pinky Island. We live in a special part of South Carolina, we live in the Low Country, which is what we are proud of. Saturdays and Sundays, we used to be spent watching baseball games right where Arthur's is right now. That's a heritage, that's what this country needs, is to save our heritage. We did it when they tried to develop a recycling center down Calawash, I mean, Chee-Chelsea Road, we stopped them, because of the Port Royal Foundation, because of the Open Land Trust, we stopped it, because our representative said, "Hey, this is the sound area, this is Port Royal Sound." Like I said, I've been with it, I've built, I started at Caligney Plaza, I ended up in, uh, Two Seventy-Eight, that was my last job with the state before I left. Four lanes, and you know what they said when we completed the four lanes? It was already outdated when we got through with it, because of the traffic, because of the, the rush. It's crazy right now, it is crazy.
It is.
Leave the plantations, leave the property alone, it is ours. Thank you.
Next and last, we have signed up Mr. Rob McBrayer.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Council, my name's Rob McBrayer, I, I don't, I'm not a certified engineer, but I'm gonna talk to you as somebody who, I live in Beaufort, and I have a business in Ridgeland, so I have driven Ridgeland from, uh, One Seventy to Snake to Four Sixty-Two, big, literally twice a day, every six days a week, for the last eleven years, and I wanna comment on some of what I've experienced as a driver and a passenger on this, on this corridor. Um, I, uh, used to come out on six, when we started here in two thousand and ten, I would pass maybe a dozen cars, two dozen, two dozen maybe on Snake Road, and when I got to Four Sixty-Two, it wasn't hard to pass somebody, and, um, without even breaking the speed limit, because it was casual. And now, if you get on Snake Road, I'll see five or six dump trucks, every morning, I see, when I get to Four Sixty-Two, you're not passing anybody coming into Ridgeland, because, not counting Hilton, Hilton Head tourist traffic, I'm passing a dozen or more dump trucks, like, sealed together by a, a line of cars. And, um, I'm, I'm looking for the ditch, every time I come up to somebody, "Is this guy coming over on my line?", 'cause, uh, you don't know. So, it's getting pretty bad, and I'm not, I'm not saying, "Don't go ahead with this project," but I am saying that our infrastructure right now is woefully inadequate, and now, people that live here have a responsibility, I think, to, um, provide a community that the move-ins, when they get here, and I am one, but, um, I'm originally from South Carolina, so I can, I can, I claim a little heritage. Um, when they move here, they've got a community that they can become, what I think the legal term is quiet enjoyment, and, um, crime, trash, supportive police, good schools, et cetera. Four-hundred-and-thirty-eight single-family unit homes, and that one parcel is eight-hundred cars that are gonna flood Snake Road twice a day, AM and PM, rush hour traffic. How many toilet flushes is that? You'll know, a lot. But, um, I think the statement, the old statement is, "We're glad that you came here, but don't bring the reason that you came with you." Now, a single avalanche, an avalanche begins with one snowflake, and no snowflake by itself feels fulfilling and responsible, but if we open this gate up, is it gonna be an avalanche on the nation? I don't know, but, um, right now, Snake makes me nervous, Four Sixty-Two causes concern. So, I'm saying, if you can, if you don't build an infrastructure, because people that move here also come with the responsibility to become productive citizens, let's don't agitate them about what they're moving into, let's do a little bit of forethought. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all you got?
Yep.
Okay. David Teller.
Have you closed the public hearing?
At this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Um, I would like to speak, I sent a letter in, um, earlier, but I would like to speak before we close the public hearing. And my name is Anne Ori, and this is going to be on a personal note, because I do own property right across from the proposed development. Um, one entrance, Middleton Creek Road, is, uh, and it was incorrectly named on the map that you sent out, um, as, uh, Marion Ori Lane, and it's, uh, directly across from the proposed entrance exits on Snake Road. The other entrance to my property is called Walnut Hill, and, um, that road entrance-exit is already dangerous due to the curve that's right before and right after Walnut Hill Road. Can you imagine how much more dangerous this could be to enter and exit Walnut Hill Road and Middleton Creek Road, if entrances to Chelsea South are added on Snake Road, much less three more entrances? Add to that the number of construction vehicles, cement trucks, waste management trucks, landscapers, utility trucks, plus all the new homeowners, which are proposed to make approximately fifteen-thousand daily car trips, and I think that eight-hundred, um, once a day was mentioned earlier, in and out of the development. How can you consider adding all of that to the already heavily traveled and dangerous road that connects Beaufort and Jasper Counties? I am also opposed to the density of this development, and its impact on our infrastructure, the traffic, the waste management, the ecosystem, and rivers, and other, um, other reasons that I think we have already been discussed. As a property owner that will be directly affected by this development, I was not notified, and neither were any of the other property owners adjacent to me in Beaufort County. There are fourteen property owners, all in Beaufort County, exiting and entering Walnut Hill and Middleton Creek Roads, and that's directly onto Snake Road, and across from the proposed main entrance, entrance to Chelsea South Development. We should have been notified prior to the first reading. Snake Road is already one of the most dangerous and traveled roads in Jasper County. With three entrances, exits, proposed, will the road have to be widened? If so, where will the property come from? Not from me. Why should I have to give up my property so others can monetarily benefit? I would like my grandchildren to have the opportunity to build on family property. My family, the Fripp's and the Ories, have already been forced to give up too much family property to the Beaufort-Jasper Water and Sewer Authority. This property has been in the Fripp-Ori family for over a hundred-and-fifty years. The only people in favor of this development are the developers and Jasper County Council. None of these individuals will be directly affected by this development. The developers come in, make their money, and most often go back to their homes and neighborhoods in other counties and states. I ask the Planning Commission and Jasper County Council to reconsider this project. Thank you.
Now...
Oh, I would, go ahead.
You sent a letter?
I did.
Yeah.
She said she would read it at the meeting, but you didn't want that, so if I could present.
Yeah, you can, you got three minutes.
Thank you.
When I call you, please talk.
Sure. Uh, Madam Councilwoman, council members. My name's Randy Schonhoff, I live directly across the name of the road, Marion Ori Lane, is actually my wife's father, and so, uh, we have a pretty vested interest in this. We look across our driveway, and I wanna talk about the traffic first, there's a couple items. Um, the entrance, um, it looks like all of the traffic for the entire facility, this development is going to be shuffled up Snake Road, whereas Highway One Seventy is right there on the front. Why can't we travel and out on One Seventy? I read the review, there's, you know, a couple hundred pages I've had to go through here in a few days, because as she pointed out, we got no notice of this meeting. Um, I understand that, uh, Beaufort-Jasper Water Safety has to work that canal, and drive up and down, that's probably ten or twenty trips a day, and instead, we're gonna route twelve-thousand, uh, vehicle trips a day up Snake Road. Um, and as she mentioned, I'm not sure how we're gonna do it, we're gonna go from a three turns, three lanes onto One Seventy, we gotta go five lanes wide at least. Church is on the right, Beaufort-Jasper's on the left, don't know where the room's gonna come from. Um, one of the other issues is, the traffic analysis shows twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-some-odd net trips a day, and they talk about a peak of seven-hundred-and-seventy-four in the morning, and nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight, bunch of numbers here, but you look at it and go, wow, you know, then it'll be over, but actually, if you spread that across the day, and I'm gonna, I'm charitably saying there's a hundred trips in the middle of the night, um, that's six-hundred-and-forty-five trips on Snake Road, uh, every hour, and every hour, that works out to eleven cars a minute, that works out to one car every six seconds, so that, you know, that becomes a, a pretty significant pile of cars. If we could look at it also, just from the owners there, the, uh, directly across Snake Road from the development area, six houses were built since two thousand and four, so they invested in this area and built houses on this, the average house they're using Zillow is five-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars, so they invested many millions of dollars in this piece of property, which is directly across from this planned development, and their quality of life is gonna be much worse with, with one car, or truck, or dump truck, or waste management, or landscaping truck going by every six seconds, right, uh, six-hundred feet from their house. Um, I think where we're gonna wind up with is people who want to move here, who wanna put up a nice house, and be a part of the community, are gonna be very distrustful that in fact, some sprawl is gonna move next door to them, um, in, in the very near future behind their back, and so now their five-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-dollar investment is quite a bit diminished. Um, water, I, I have several items here, I, I wrote a letter that I, I would hope, uh, would, um, be read, but several questions, if I could, for just a moment, there, Beaufort-Jasper Water Safety Authority, on their website says they pump twenty million gallons of water out of that canal every day, to distribute throughout Beaufort, throughout Jasper, and we're putting this, a, a giant, uh, development area right next door to that, there's nowhere else along the line, all the way to the Savannah River, where that water source comes from. That water source gets damaged, uh, impeded, uh, polluted, that's everyone's drinking water, and that's the purpose. And lastly, the Ori family provided the land for that, um, water plant in nineteen sixty-three, and so, there's been a tremendous amount of development made available by that water, because that, you know, no development, no water, no development, so, without that property, this, this would not have grown like it has. So, the punishment for the Ori family, which is not mine, but my wife's, is that now, we're gonna have this giant sprawl right across from the few descendants that live right on that piece of property, and, and, um, that alone is a non-factual bit of, of ethical issue. So, I appreciate this, um, I, I would seriously want you to consider that, let's put in more houses that are like five-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-dollar houses on large pieces of land, and preserve the integrity, this, this, this wonderful environment that the other people in Jasper, uh, here that has spoken, talked about. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is closed, and those of you that sent letters, they will be sent to each council member, so that we can read it and see what's being said. At this time, Wyman?
Yes ma'am, the next item on the agenda is also for public hearing only, for an ordinance of previous development agreement for Chelsea Plantation LLC pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Development Act and Article Four Title Twenty of the Code of Ordinances of Jasper County, and authorizing the chairperson of Jasper County Council to execute said development agreement. Again, this is public hearing only. Again, this is public hearing only.
At this time, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. Public hearing going once. Public hearing going twice. Come on.
Helen Bryan?
Hello. We got you.
Okay. I'm sorry to bring it up here a bit. You talked about infrastructure, you talked about water quality. What it didn't say was that there's no sewer lines attaching this property to any of Beaufort-Jasper Sewer. Behind this development is a holding pond and a sixteen and a half mile canal from Savannah River. This holding pond holds several million gallons of water. If you put septic tanks after septic tank, what's going to happen to the underlay? Is this water going to go into the holding canal? Is it going to go into the holding pond, detention pond? If they have no sewer, look at that impact on this infrastructure that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public hearing is closed.
Yes, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is for a public hearing only for an ordinance to adopt planned development district PDD zone for tract of land consisting of approximately thirty-eight point eighty-four acres bearing Jasper County Tax Matt Number Zero Four One Zero 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 Three Zero Three Zero located along Highway Two Seventy-Eight, approximately two miles east of I- ninety-five X- eight and knowing CSP Development PDD.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. Lisa, what's Ms. Wayman, do you have anything to say?
I have not received any written comments for this. I've received two phone calls. They were just requiring as to what the plan was for that property.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council, Harburg County Department. I've appeared before you objecting to such things as Project Ninety-Five and with concerns about this project CSP. And my message has centered around projects, about, around the traffic, excuse me, not the projects themselves. I have also written about traffic concerns in the Low Country in my monthly article in the Sun-Times, including Project Ninety-Five, and recently about the car track that's before the Hardyville City Council. As you know, Madam Chair, I have advocated at the LATS meeting for a regional traffic study that takes into account all the projects in southern Jasper County coming our way. My appeal tonight is that you consider the tremendous impact of the larger picture before you move further with CSP and Chelsea South, because these two housing projects will greatly challenge the major roadways in the future. Perhaps CSP needs a frontage road along Two Seventy-Eight. That was in the X- eight master plan that was performed several years ago. Yes, it's expensive, but so is the cost of human lives and the resources needed to attend to the accidents that will happen on Two Seventy-Eight. Moon River has pledged three hundred thousand dollars towards the regional study. Shouldn't CSP and Chelsea South contribute also and study what needs to be done on these roadways? As my nuns taught me, haste makes waste. Surely, it is better to err on the side of caution. And these projects can wait while you study the options. And I might add, because I didn't speak during Chelsea, but I was asked by a number of people to look at that project. And I wrote down Snake Road and 462. And I want to say that my first impression on Snake Road, it is a beautiful, tree-lined country road. My second impression is that I wouldn't want to drive that road at night. I'm especially bad, I don't drink anymore. And lastly, and sadly, I noticed at least two memorials to accident victims along that road. What I'm asking is, please wait, study this, don't rush, and keep that a tree-lined lane that it is now. Keep Jasper beautiful and safe. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner? Okay?
The next item is for public hearing only. Also, there's an ordinance approving a development agreement for CSP Conduit Street Partners Development Agreement pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Development Act and Article Four Title Twenty of the Code of Ordinances of Jasper County and authorizing the chairperson of Jasper County Council to execute said development agreement.
Good evening. The subject properties consist of twenty-eight and a half acres and is located at one-one-nine-six-four Speedway Boulevard. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment to have the property designated as general commercial. The property is currently split zone, community commercial, and rural preservation. The applicant would like to develop a warehouse and then transportation distribution establishment at this location. The property is vacant and undeveloped. Future land use map identifies this area as urban transition, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by the municipality. For these areas that experience redevelopment or redevelopment, consideration should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. The adjacent parcels are zone community commercial, rural preservation, and residential, and is also located adjacent to the Hardyville city limits. Adjacent land uses are commercial and vacant. An RV park is being developed to the rear of the site through the city of Hardyville, and the properties are accessed by Highway Seventeen, which is a four-lane state-maintained highway classified as a major thoroughfare. Planning Commission reviewed this project at their April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, and they recommend approval of this. And the properties have been posted with a sign, a letter sent out, and a notice put in the newspaper.
Okay. Floor is now open for a public hearing. Floor is open for a public hearing. At this time, the public hearing is closed.
Madam Chairwoman, we accidentally skipped over Item F. Which finished G?
Yeah.
We just did Item G.
Yeah, okay. We on G?
So now it's Item F. Look, can we read that?
Yes, ma'am. I'll read it. Item F is an ordinance approving a development agreement for CSP Conduit Street Partners Development pursuant to the South Carolina Local Government Development Act and Article Four Title Twenty of the Code of Ordinances of Jasper County and authorizing the chairperson of Jasper County Council to execute said development agreement.
And this development agreement relates back to the PDD that you just mentioned for CSP.
All right. At this time, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. Public hearing going once. Public hearing going twice. Public hearing closed.
Madam Chairwoman, although all the others were public hearing, only item G, which Ms. Wagner just mentioned a moment ago, is for second reading.
The second reading. At this time, I'm going to call for a motion for this being the second reading of this ordinance, zero dash two zero two two dash one five.
Still moving, Madam Chair.
We're here second.
Second.
Properly moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
This is Item H on the agenda. It's a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number zero twenty-two-two-dash-twelve to amend the official zoning maps for Jasper County so as to transfer two properties located along Church Road bearing Tax Matt Number Zero Two Nine Three Nine Oh Three Oh One Four and Zero Two Nine Three Nine Oh Seven Oh One Five from the residential zone to the community commercial zone of the Jasper County official zoning map.
The subject properties consist of point oh six and point one one acres and are both located along Church Road. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment to have the properties designated as community commercial. Both properties are currently zoned residential and are undeveloped. The applicant would like to have the properties resented to community commercial to allow for a small takeout-only restaurant. The comprehensive plan identifies this as urban transition. The adjacent parcels are zoned residential. The city limits of Hardyville are nearby, but they are not contiguous to the subject property. The adjacent land uses are residential with some commercial properties nearby. And the subject properties are accessed by an unnamed county maintained their road. Planning Commission reviewed this application at their April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, and they recommended approval. This is a separate reading. Then public hearing, all the properties were posted, notices sent, and a notice placed in the paper.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the floor for a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. My name is on the list as Jamie, Jamie Behring, but my name is Jamie Baker. I have property joining. Good afternoon. I have property joining. These are very small lots, and I was really concerned, curious about what the purpose of these, purpose of changing the zoning would be. As you know, coming, whenever there's a heavy storm, Highway Forty-Six flood heavily in that area. Sometimes the water level can be up to, like, up to eight inches or a foot. And I've contacted Lisa Lam often to have her to clean the drainage ditch. And she also said that eventually plan to, to do Highway Forty-Six again, because it's, I guess, of the incline, of the amount of water that comes down from the railroad track, a lot settles, there's like a little pocket. So the lot is very small. I don't understand how you could fit a small takeout restaurant in such a small area. There are two lots adjoining it, which was commercial at one point when I was a young person growing up in the area. So I thought initially that you're going to join that lot with the other ones that's on the corner. Part of the property, part of the property belongs to, I think, Charles Bush, maybe on the other end, his father. He wasn't aware of the change in the zoning, requested change in the zoning zones. I'm not really sure whether he's here to make. But if you were planning to put a small restaurant there, or the owner's planning to put a small restaurant there in that area, something needs to be done about the road, highway, because of the flood flooding and also clearing out the ditches. And also, I guess, the road should be paved. One last comment I have, not related to this, but in general, the mess-up is created at Exit Five. I live on Highway Seventeen often. I have to go through Hardyville in order to go to the post office to go to the store. So coming through Exit South, going Exit Five South and Exit Five North, coming through that area is like taking your life in your hands. You have to be very careful in order to pass through that area. And I notice now that I live farther down on Highway Seventeen going south. There's a huge tract that's being developed now on Highway Seventeen. When we first initially bought the property, we felt that we were safe because the wildlife refuge was only accessible, okay? There's not going to be any development here. But now we see the development. I, I understand that when you own property, it's your property. You want to develop it, you want to put something there. But also, like the gentleman spoke about Chelsea, you have to think about the people that are already in the area. We moved here. Okay, thank you. But anyway, I was curious about what the property was going to be used for and whether there's any plans for bringing up the roadway to, aboard flooding.
It's just a property over there with old fish market.
Yes.
It's across.
Yeah.
Is that the one you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Well, see, that's even more confusing with this map, because there's no way to differentiate.
I can show you where the fish market is.
Huh?
I can show you where the fish market is.
Yeah, would you please?
It's right here. And that's the barber shop. Barber shop? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's backwards.
The fish market. This, this is the Red Ray here. The barber shop, the fish market. Mr. Willie Bush had this market. This market was Willie Bush.
Okay. Can you show me the property at that, at some point here? Because that's, that's...
These are the two properties right behind Mr. Willie Bush.
Mm-hmm.
These two properties right here.
Okay.
This is the barber shop.
Mm-hmm.
This is the river track.
Mm-hmm.
This is the church track. That's Lake Flumber, right across from Lake Flumber. Barber shop, just these two properties.
Wait a minute. Yeah. Is there a website you go to to get a more definite understanding?
I'll get one chat.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Got it now?
No, but we're going to get it.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa. I'm the owner of sixty-six week Lambert Road. I've been owning the land since two thousand and fourteen, something like around there. And the road by the factory, it's damaged. Every time you go there, you have to get in people's property because our road has big dents. And then when Matthew came, the hurricane came, a big tree fell on one of the properties where the barber shop is in front. And the road there has been damaged since that happened. The water there is always flooded. When it rains, it can't step anywhere because it's really humid. So I think it is something, needs to be something done with the road and the way the water drains. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with that area and how that water hole was right there to the little dirt road. And that's, what's the highway number?
Forty-six.
Highway Forty-Six. Yeah. The water hole's there. But you all need to get in touch with the State Department. That's the State Department.
Yeah, we, I talked to the state, and they said that they were going to get a grant. They were, they had to apply for a grant in order to repay Highway Forty-Six at that point. And if they got the grant, then they would do something about the drainage. I think they got the grant because they had torn down a number of houses in the area, which is part of the grant. But nothing has been done about this area.
And people have been questioning that for a long time, about eight years, about their water settling there. Like that. And the state, that money left over in their budget, they had to spend. Somebody had to lead on the grant. But anyway, we've got a moment to move on so we can get out here. Oh, we need to call for a motion for this to be the second reading. Now, we have another, this is not the final reading. This is not the final reading. Call for a motion for the second reading.
Still moving, Madam Chair. Second.
It's the properly moving second. All in favor, all say aye.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to speak, please. On that road, I went down there. I don't know how you can have a drive-through there on a dirt road. In a residential area, we're trying, I think we spent money, or a grant down that area, trying to clean it up a little bit. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, all say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Andrew Fulgham and Kim Burges.
Madam Chair, members of council, yes, I'm not alone on this. This is the grand finale of the ordinances tonight. Your, your budget is in sufficient form for us to ask you to consider accepting it for first read. And also, as part of that motion, we need you to officially announce that the public hearing for the budget will be on June sixth. Is that clear? Just some highlights of it. It's a work in progress, as you know. As you know, it is a difficult year because of deferred maintenance, deferred spending, a lot of needs that we need to provide the services, particularly sixty percent of the budget is for public safety improvements. We have twenty-seven percent that goes toward state mandates that you must pay for, so it reduces your discretionary. This is a reassessment implementation year, the reassessment from the last year delayed and implemented this year. So it is a little complicated in that you have to roll back mileage associated with new growth. And as we've discussed with you, we have an opportunity to, to dig into the budget first thing next Monday morning at York County Council Retreat. So I believe I've covered the highlights. The total budget is, has twenty percent currently, twenty percent more revenue and expenditures this year. We're looking at a total operating budget of forty-six million, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars currently. And again, we provided a memo with you that just gave you some of the highlights of what increases that we saw as being necessary this year, everything from increases in retirement costs to health insurance. As you can imagine, costs keep going up, fuel costs are high, our meals for detention centers have increased, everything has increased a bit. So lots more work to do, but we're just respectfully requesting that you consider accepting the budget to get the process started. First reading this afternoon so that you can begin your work on the budget. And again, if you would be so kind as to consider, including in your motion, the announcement that the official public hearing for the budget will be held on June sixth.
Madam Chair, so move first reading, and also to include the June sixth date for public hearing for our municipal year budget.
Second. Let's get properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close has the same right.
No.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, new business done, old business done. Council members, comment, I'm asking to keep it very brief, and we'll start now here with John Kim.
Okay, I'll just keep it brief. I attended the Operation Ford Operating Base up at Legacy Oaks. Twenty-two veterans commit suicide every day. If you're a veteran, or even if you're a citizen of Jasper County, go up there, look at it, meet the veterans up there, we can help. They just need to have access to other people. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I simply ask that we lift those families up around the, the country that had massacres over the past weekend, and pray that this kind of nonsense will cease almost immediately.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman?
I thank the Lord for another opportunity, pray that everybody's still well, and we just keep moving forward, and all ones that ride the county, so councilmen that can be riding, checking. I like beautification, and I ain't going to stop.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to remind everybody on Saturday, May the twenty-first, Blue Garen Nature Center and our Conservation District is having our annual awards recognition and fundraiser, which is located in downtown Ridgeland. That's the Blue Garen Nature Center outside between there and Lakeside to honor our conservations of the year. There'll be a lot of different items there for auction and good fellowship. Conservation District is a huge resource to our landowners and citizens here in Jasper County, and also to our school district, working with students on teaching them about the environment and conservation as well. So please mark that date. Also, we want to keep the Rhodes family in our prayers. Mayor Brotem Brewton Ridgeland, Mr. Tommy Rhodes, his brother Philip Rhodes passed away last week. Mr. Philip has been really a backbone of our community, especially in athletics. He was a coach, not only at Thomas Haverwood, John Paul too, and he's really had a big impact on the youth in our community and the entire family, growing up here a generation, so let's keep him in our prayers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I'm just asking everyone to stay safe. At this time, we're going to call on the county minister to give his report.
Madam Chair, members of council, I provide that report for your information. I don't have anything additional to report on it. Unless, of course, you have any questions to me.
No questions. At this time, I'm calling for motion to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.